I'd like to call and order the work session for the city council, Mayor and city council, city of Tonton Town for the month of March and ask Councilmember Wance to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you here tonight. It's pretty spring evening.
It's winter.
All out to good thought. We have quite an agenda tonight. I'm not sure if I've ever seen the agenda this full or not. I don't know whether we're going to get everything done or not. We may decide to move some things to the April meeting. But we'll see how it goes and we'll kind of play it by ear, I guess, as we go along. The first order of business, oh, first of all, council members are present and accounted for it, so I want to report that. And the first item is a reception of a delegation. Our old friend Paul Chamberlain is with us to talk to us on behalf of the Tonton Town Business Owners Parking. Paul, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, please. You know, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you all this evening. And we are coming to you this evening with an idea that we believe would bring great value, safety, and better opportunities for the city as well as for the businesses that are already here and businesses for the future. Now, with that said, there is a perception that council does not like to hear from people and take consideration from the community in what they have to say on an issue. Case in point, a few months ago, attended a meeting, and at the end of the workshop, a motion was made to adjourn the meeting before taking public comment. A point was made to that. The council person at that time realized the error, but because of Robert's rule, you all needed to vote on it. And ironically, two people actually voted to adjourn the meeting. On top of that, when we were given the opportunity to speak, the time limit was set at two minutes. You know, I don't think that, you know, I'm not coming up here to try to take a half hour and speak to you all, but anyway, what type of a message does that send to the citizens and business owners? Okay? As elected officials, each one of you should embrace the input from these workshops, whether somebody is speaking for or against an issue that you're for or against. You know, we should check our personalities and our egos at the door and come in here to try to work together, to try to get things done. You know, every now and again, it's a good time for everyone to take a look in the mirror and do a checkup from the neck up, as they say. The city has much to offer, and the sky is the limit of what can happen. We, as a city, have some exciting things that we can celebrate. I mean, over the last several months, look at the transition of the businesses in the city. You know, we have a few new places to eat, new businesses on Main Street that have been doing well and that have made a difference. You know, you have Rust by Justin, you have the Red Door, Stonehouse Cakery, Vintage Colors, the Curiosity Shop, to name just a few. Now, I know that each and every one of you is sitting on the edge of your seat, wondering, what is this great idea that I'm coming to bring to you this evening? Well, the idea is to help promote more businesses, promote safer places to park, have more visible parking area, and to replace the number of parking spaces that were lost to the downtown businesses because of Streetscape. And it had nothing to do with, you know, the city. It obviously had to do with the state. So what we're doing is we're asking that the city asks the employees to park behind the fire department. There's adequate parking there. Now, this wouldn't even be an issue if this building were a private entity. That would not be an issue because most private businesses understand the importance that parking, the closest parking, that's an income stream, and that is for the customers. Now, I know most of you or many of you might be saying that, well, parking in downtown is plentiful and throughout the week that there's all kinds of empty spots. And that's true, no doubt about it. However, if we want to attract a better variety of businesses, we must have parking that is safe, visible, easy, accessible for these businesses. So what does the city have to gain from this small change? The city gets multiple wins here. First, the ability to attract new businesses, better chance in keeping businesses that you currently have, increase in revenue, not only from the new businesses, but you would also have an income source from the meters that are in the parking lot. There will be better opportunities for additional businesses that come to this town because of these parking spaces being available. The parking issue has caused the city to lose opportunities in the past, as well as hurt businesses that were currently here by having a lack of safe parking, visible parking, and so forth. Never before has the opportunity been any greater to boost business and promote the fact that we are open for business, as well as for the city to show that they are open to being a partner to help them succeed. The new blood in the city has brought a lot of great ideas and ways to make things happen. However, by, quote by Richard Branson, you know, "You do not get paid for having ideas. You get paid for making them happen." In addition, you know, one mediocre idea that has been put into action is infinitely more valuable than a dozen of brilliant ideas that you're saving for some other day or the right timing. You know, if you have an idea that you really believe in, then do something about. Unless you take action, your idea will remain worthless, and that is why we're here this evening. So with that said, we're here tonight to ask you to partner with the business owners to help create a better, safer, and more visible parking area for the customers to patronize these businesses in downtown. We're asking you to be part of the solution. So let's build a city that people will talk about and want to be a part of. People love winners, and with the small group of business owners that we currently have, they are poised for success, and they can't do it without the city as a partner. So all we ask is for you to join us and be part of the future success of this city. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Paul.
What kind of...
Anybody have any questions for Paul?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
We have a number of city workers, as I understand it, that come to the city office and see vehicles from time to time, but they don't stay long. And it's come up before the council before, and we've all discussed in recent months having the people who stay here all day park in the back lot. I think Mayor McCarron has made an effort to encourage folks already to do that. Do you see an ongoing problem with that?
Well, I mean, I believe that currently that all the parking spots that are across by the, across from the building are taken by city employees' vehicles.
That's incorrect.
It's not?
No, majority of those are actually residents in the apartments on the corner.
During the day?
Yes.
Well, now, let me ask you a question. It's my understanding that there's a two-hour limit on those, or is it a one hour?
One hour.
Okay, so with a one-hour limit, why are those vehicles being allowed to continually park there?
That's, and I can't answer that question. But when I visit City Hall, there's always at least six places available in that parking lot. And to counter one of your points, I really don't see safety as a point for that.
Okay, let me explain safety to you.
Okay, let me explain what I'm saying first, and that is this. You're going to have people then crossing the busy East Baltimore Street.
Correct.
Because the vast majority of businesses are on the other side. Safety, how many of them are going to walk to the square to use a crosswalk?
Probably the majority of them.
I'll disagree with that. But nonetheless, I don't see safety as the problem.
Okay, let me ask you. Have you ever tried to park, parallel park on the side of the street, on that side and try to get out of your vehicle?
Absolutely, I have.
And you, I mean, you know, I parked there a number of times. And there's some trucks that park there, and their tires are on the white line, and their tires are up against the curb. There is no room. If you're an elderly individual, it is very difficult for them to park out on the side street.
Well, Paul, I think...
And it's very difficult for them, if they were to park back here, to walk down. If they're here, they can walk over to the light and cross. You know, there's individuals that have parked over here, they go down to the crosswalk to try to cross. People don't even stop for people on the crosswalks. So, but anyway, I mean, for the number of parking spots that were taken by Streetscape, I think that would be a big opportunity for the city to go ahead and change this parking lot, make it more inviting, so that people, when they drive by, they see it as an inviting place to park, and they go in there. And then they should be a two-hour meter. I mean, it's very difficult for somebody to park their vehicle there, and if they want to go stroll the town, very difficult for them to do that in just one hour.
Right, I agree with you.
And so, I mean, would you agree that it would be safer for someone to park in this parking lot versus on the street?
Depending on ultimately where they're trying to go.
Well, I'm talking about if you're opening your car door into traffic, what's safer? Parking lot, road?
I understand.
One thing that we have to realize is that, I mean, my office, I've been in my office for 20 years, is adjacent to this parking lot. My clients use that parking lot. And there's never, ever a time where there's non-parking places there. I don't ever remember that lot being completely full.
Well, no, because I think the perception is, and again, it's a perception issue, right? Perception is that people look at that parking lot, and they don't see it as a place to park and shop. I think if it was...
If we put up a sign, would that be better?
I think if there was some type of signage, if the meters were painted like they are with it gray, like they're out here, two hours, I think that would be a tremendous help. And then, and the other thing is too, is enforcing. I mean, the business owners, they're going out of their way to try and reimburse their customers when they have to park here, which is, you know, a great thing for them. So, I mean, they're just looking for ways to promote business, and I think we have some great opportunities coming forward.
When Streetscape was completed, I was a proponent of eliminating the parking meters. And I had a contingent of businesses this size in here telling me that they wanted to reinstall the parking meter.
Correct. Well, you understand that part. You understand that, Mayor. I mean, if we had no parking meters, because of all the apartments that we have in the area, they, you know, cars would just park there and they'd be there.
You'd set a limit, and you'd chalk tires, and you'd have somebody patrol the street and give tickets. Now, I'll be the first one to say that we should be monitoring these parking meters a lot closer than we are. There's no question about that. I think we do a poor job of that. And I think that that in itself would help a lot of things, particularly this lot over here. We've done studies observing the parking at any hour of the day, both in downtown and in the city lot, and there's never, never a lack of parking.
Right, and it's not about today. What we're looking for is we're looking to in the future. And being able to, if a business wanted to come into town, let's say we wanted to get another coffee shop in this corner business here, you know, and we were, you know, we were able to explain to them, hey, listen, this is what we have that's available to, you know, to customers. That would be a great help for attracting new businesses. It's just a matter to make it so that it's more of a visible thing. I mean, you know, as you drive down the street, you can see the small signs for parking in the back. But still, a lot of people from out of town, they'll miss that. There's a better chance that if something was visually in this parking lot, that they would pick up on that and be able to park there.
I like that idea. I think we could identify that parking lot as public parking. There may be some conception among people that that's for the city employees or something. It never has been, and it never will be. So maybe we identify it as public parking or something of that nature. Maybe that'll, you know, maybe that'll help.
Well, and I think also...
But the other things, like Brad was saying, I don't want people jaywalking in the middle of Baltimore Street. Just said a few minutes ago, they don't stop people on the crosswalks.
People do that when they come to this meeting, unfortunately.
Well, I know, sure. Everybody does that.
But you're going to have that regardless, and unfortunately, you cannot legislate stupidity, right?
No, right.
But I think it would be a great idea to, if the meters over here could be painted the same colors as the meters that are on the street.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? Why are those meters? They give the impression, you said the impression is it's an off-limits in your statement. Why are they a different color than the street meters?
I just think because they're newer than the...
Newer model?
No.
It indicates the hours.
The hours.
The hours, oh, I see. Yeah, these are in effect 24 hours.
But these are, yeah, these are 24-hour ones as well, which is fine.
Well, these are not 24.
No, correct. No, just the ones here in the parking lot. But that's all we're asking, is ways for, ways for, you know, the businesses and the city to work together to promote this town. I mean, they're doing a lot of great things, and there's some great things to come forward here in the next several months.
There's nothing, I don't think there's one council member here tonight that wouldn't want to encourage the business community in the downtown. And if simply identifying the parking lot would be a way to do that, I think we could do that.
And Paul, your other suggestion was two hours on the meters.
Well, two hours on the meeting, on the meters as well, because that's tough for someone to park here for one hour, and I mean, if they're strolling in these shops...
I mean, you go down to the hairdresser on the corner, and it takes longer than two hours to get your hair cut.
So, but you know, two-hour, two-hour meter, I think would be...
Marvin used to do it cooker night, but...
That would encourage to walk around now also, and change the color from gold rod yellow to twenty.
So... Again, one rule, if you want to speak, come up to the mic, because we need to have this recorded on our video system.
If anybody else wants... Marvin, if you indulge me a moment, you know, a while ago, and I don't know how much time it was, Nancy had a meet, Nancy McCormick, our Economic Development Director, had a meeting with the local businesses. And one of the suggestions that was that we park on that one side so that it leaves one side completely empty. Now, having said that, we've also gone further with that. We have a staff car, and we have a code enforcement vehicle that is no longer parked in that lot. We have the building across the street where we've taken three people from this building, and they now park across the street in the parking lot that we have over there. So we have increased the number of spots as well.
I've been here quite a few years, been this 54. Parking has always been an issue in the entire 54 years, and it hasn't been solved yet. We're excited over the Streetscape program. And I'd like to ask, Paul, do you think that Streetscape helped business parking or hurt business parking?
Hurt.
Hurt. In what way do you think it hurt?
Took away what, at least eight to 12 spaces.
Do you think the pinch points have anything to do with it?
Absolutely.
Yep. Another thing, the state said we had to meet the disabilities width for the sidewalks. So two wheelchairs could go side by side, which is ridiculous. I seen one last year, I think. So that narrowed the width of the parking. Now you take your life in your hands to get out of your car when you do park. Two of my customers had vans, and they actually had the mirrors taken off on their van because another, like, van passed them, and the mirrors hit. So it is dangerous parking, and yet we claim the Streetscape program was such a benefit to Tonton Town. That Streetscape just made it more convenient to people to go to Waynesboro, Hanover, Frederick, and Westminster.
Anyone else have any questions or suggestions about the parking issue? Parking issue?
Can I make a comment? Catherine Adelaide, thank you. I think your comment also was about not having enough opportunities for the public to speak, and from the agenda, I can see that there's some changes been made, so that's good to hear. Just on the parking, my impression of it always was that the meters, I agree with you, seem like a terrible idea as a shopper. When I see meters, I'm going to go shop where there's no meters. So, I mean, to get a tick, to go shopping here and get a ticket, I've seen some of the business owners keep little jars of quarters, and is there any way, one idea I'd had was doing a free shopping parking day where you hood the meters, but I didn't realize about the tenants taking up the shopping meters. Could there be a way that you could maybe post more signs or make it more obvious that the meters, because to encourage the businesses here, you want to have those meters free for the people who are shopping right there. There's nothing more convenient. But if the people who are shopping could know, you know, if they get something stamped or, I don't know, it seemed like there should be another way to not run off the shoppers because of the parking meters, but find a way that they could use the meters and get reimbursed, or, I just know initially, I thought, like you did, the meters, it's like, that's going to kill business, but I forgot about the tenants using the spaces and filling them up, so it's kind of a conundrum.
That's truly, truly an issue. And again, I think that it could be handled by strict enforcement of the parking rules, but that would require us doing something different than we're doing now.
But what I'd like to see is like a free parking day where you don't have the meters, but another way to find so that shoppers can have that invitation of, yes, there's a meter there, but if you're shopping, you are not going to get a ticket, and you're not going to pay for a meter. So that would be my idea. There's probably other ways to, I'd like to see shoppers who...
I think the downtown business group has a lot of vitality, and I think that would be a good topic for them to discuss and come to us with a recommendation. I'd be more than willing to put that on the agenda for further discussion if we had a presentation, some suggestions on how we could accommodate the downtown business community better.
Just as a shopper, when I, like I said, if I can go shopping where there's no meters and I don't worry about a ticket, people have too much on their minds. I'm going to pick that place. So if there's a way...
I'm the same way. I won't park at a meter if I can possibly avoid it.
So if they could know, yes, there's a meter there, but if you're a true shopper and you're shopping here, you're not going to get a ticket, and you're not going to pay that quarter. That would be my idea, but I don't have the specifics.
Thank you.
And I'll bet as soon as you put a hood on the meter, there'll be a tenant in that spot.
Immediately.
All day.
All day. That's, again, the conundrum.
Yep.
All right. Who else has any questions on the park?
I got Steve.
All right, in the back. Can you come up to the mic, please? No.
I've been here 12 years. Oh, sorry, I'm Priscilla Shope. We had pristine antiques, collectibles, and gifts. We have closed our business, and there are new tenants coming in, so we really want to promote the parking issue and there not being an issue with them staying there and being able to attract customers. So we are also moving our business over to the old Stonehouse, built in 1760, pre-U.S.A., and we will open up an antique store there, possibly every weekend, we'll decide in the future. All I want to do is give you my perspective over the last 12 years. Parking has always been an issue. When Mayor Schumacher was, I mean, not mayor, I'm sorry, city manager, I got it, Henry, he actually had all the employees parking in the back, and he always came around and asked us what were our biggest concerns and parking was. Most of the shop owners fought for parking meters when we had Streetscape because, again, it's been mentioned, if we don't have the meters, the tenants that live above all the shops and then the apartment buildings, they'll all park there all day, every day, including the weekend, and there's no law to enforce them to move. Right now, at least, we have a chance to, you know, if there's no parking meters, then there's no law to make them move, right? Okay. So with that said, we really have to have parking meters. And unless you've been a business in town, you really don't understand what the concern could be for that. So all we want to do is promote business, and yes, Henry, you've done a great job, along with Nancy McCormick and the mayor, to really help open up some more parking spaces. But the safe parking is a big concern. When customers even know that there's a parking lot back behind all the shops here, the back parking lot, that's not necessarily safe. They have to dodge the cars to get from the parking lot down the alley. Lot of people have a cane, or they're really not able to walk that far safely. So having this parking lot right by City Hall would make it so easy for them to make a right, go up to the light, punch that walking thing that works. Most cities, they doesn't. They can get around, and we're trying to promote to get around to all the shops. So they can either go to the right, go up to the meter and cross, or they can go down where they would usually go by pristines and go down where there's a crosswalk. So we really feel that we want to promote the police station parking lot also, and that's safe because they can come around by Country Kitchen and walk up. And we really want them to encompass all of the downtown, get by Red Door, you know, just travel throughout the whole downtown, and not feel like they have to try to parallel park. And have you ever tried to parallel park on a Maryland State Highway? You pull up to back in, and the car comes up right behind you. And unless you're good at parallel parking, which most people aren't, it makes it a big challenge. So we really, really are hoping for your support. And I'm really hoping also for the shops that are opening up on Frederick Street, West Baltimore Street, and on York Street, because there's more shops coming in, and more and more people are attracted to our town. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
What days of the week are most of the shops open?
I used to be open Wednesday through Sunday, all day, every day. I mean, except for Monday, Tuesday. And Monday, Tuesdays are slower. Some of the shops have now changed their hours back down to Friday, Saturday, Sunday because of the economy, and really not getting enough shoppers in to make it worthwhile for you to be open that many days. And I will tell you, I experienced the same thing. That's not the way we want it. We really want to promote easier parking. We really want to expand our hours. So with the economy changing and more shops coming into town, it'll make it more worthwhile to become a destination town. So right now, I agree, the parking is available when the shops are closed, but when it comes to Friday, it's pretty busy. Saturday, I understand, the city parking lot is empty, but it's not inviting. It's golden rod yellow, it's very intimidating, and it's only one hour. My customers alone, I would give them money to pay for their parking outside. I would ask them as soon as they walked in the door, have you paid the meters? Where are you parked? Where have you parked? They're like, well, I wanted to park in that parking lot up there, but it's only one hour, and I didn't know what to do. So we're, you know, changing it to two hours and painting them black and making it a little bit more inviting and making a stop and shop sign. Anything like that would be a help. So that's all we're asking for.
That's great.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. What else? Anybody? All right, well, let's move on. Is Roy Libdan here? I don't see Roy. He's the next on the agenda. I want to present a program on Tri-Vent, so we'll skip that one. Next, we have the approval of the amendments for February the 3rd and February the 8th, regular meetings, and our February the 27th council retreat workshop. Anyone have any additions or corrections for Monday night on those minutes? There are none, they'll be up for approval on Monday night. We're trying something a little bit different, at least for the next few meetings. And again, our meetings have tended to run much longer than normal, and when they do that, it reduces the ability to receive public comment, and we want public comment, contrary to what you may think. So we've decided to present a program to where folks that would want to speak about anything that is not on the agenda will be invited to do that before we get in the meat of the agenda. Folks that want to talk about stuff that appeared on the agenda will have that opportunity at the end of the meeting. And the thinking here is that with the discussion among council about the action items, you may have many of your questions already answered before the end of the meeting, and you won't have to ask any other questions. So I'll ask right now, is there anybody, and again, because the agenda is full, I appreciate you keeping your remarks close. I appreciate you keeping your remarks close. I haven't set a particular time limit on how long I'll let people speak, but it just depends on how many, how many folks come up to take that opportunity. Does anybody have any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda?
Catherine Adelaide, nine Cortland. Yeah, my public comment is about this. It's great. I'm so happy. I'd like to know whose idea it was. Anybody want to take credit for-
Angela is correct. Brought that up at the workshop.
Thank you very much. It was a big concern of mine because I, several times I had heard, you know, well, it's not on the agenda. And so giving this opportunity for non-agenda items, there's some that I'm not going to get into tonight, but the only thing I would say, this is a wonderful, wonderful start to getting the public involved, getting people involved with the process and especially at the beginning so that the, the diehards will stay all night, like myself, but it helps people to be more involved. So I'm very happy to see that. I, I hate to be not completely happy, but the thing I would like to see added to this though, I'd also like you to keep the public comment pertaining to agenda items at the end. But what I would do, if you're looking at your, at your agenda here, is beginning with the city manager report, everything down to the end, I would hold for the public comment there. But I think it's critically important, and I mean critically important, on every resolution and especially anything that's going to be adopted, up for adoption, especially on a Wednesday night, that you take public comment after the council has completed its discussion on that. I find it very, and I'm, I have a pretty good mind, I think, but it gets very confusing on several items when you're taking notes, you're listening to what everybody's saying. By the time you get back up, you've forgotten half of it. You guys have forgotten half of it. Everybody's tired. So in the spirit of including the public, I think a lot of public would have some good ideas, but especially for resolutions like this charter resolution, when you're, when the council has done their work and they've had their discussion, I would really encourage you, yeah, it'll be a little bit more cumbersome, but I would encourage you to take public comment on that charter amendment or ordinance or resolution immediately after you're done with it, because then the council members could say, oh, that's a good idea, I'm going to check into that, or no, I disagree with that, or whatever. To put it all at the end like that, to me, is very confusing and, and to me, it shuts down the process. So I love what you're doing, I love the direction, and I would encourage you to also include, you know, a time for public comment after these very important ordinances and resolutions and charter amendments. Thank you.
One comment, two comments really. The city attorney brought it up first, that we, you know, suggested this be done. And the other thing is, we don't vote on anything at this meeting. So with the comments at the end, we still have a chance to evaluate them for Monday's meeting when we do vote. Okay, so it still works because we do listen to your comments and take them into consideration before we vote on Monday.
Well, it just makes more sense though, that when you're, you know, when you're in the discussion and the ideas are coming and you're taking notes, to have a moment at the end to say what's, what's, what's going on.
Our, our meetings are not structured as a town hall meeting as they are in New England, where people just come in and say whatever's on their mind and they talk about anything.
No, that's not what I meant.
We have, we have a particular agenda we have to go through.
Right.
And again, I, I think we can accommodate everybody's input, but in an effort to hold a meeting in a timely fashion and an orderly fashion, we'll try it this way for a while and see how it works.
Okay.
If it's not working, then we can revise it in the future.
But you understand my comment though, is to take public comments after discussion.
I do, but I don't, but I don't agree with it, that's all. All right. Jim, come on.
Jim Parker, treasurer of Tony Town Volunteer Fire Company. On behalf of the fire company, I'd like to thank you for your annual check that was presented to us. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I thank you for the invitation to the banquet. It was a wonderful time. Next on the agenda is the councilman ethics disclosure statements. Counselor, do you have that on your list?
Yes, we'll eventually have as a thing that you can read where you tell the council and I'll add, you know, kind of improv it now, is everybody's seen the agenda, does anybody believe they have any conflicts of interest on the agenda items tonight? And then that's what you would say and everybody would just say, no, and we'd move on. So I'll have something in writing so that you can have it in front of you at your test so you can say that, but that's from the mandate of the Ethics Commission. The Tony Town Ethics Commission said they wanted that done at the beginning of every meeting.
Okay.
And if you have a conflict, you're supposed to say yes.
I have a follow-up on that. When I saw this agenda item about the disclosure statements, I thought it might be the, you discussing the annual statements. You received annual packets for ethics disclosures. Do you know the due date for those? Are they-
That was signed in-
Same day.
I think it's the 26th.
26th of this month.
25th.
25th, yes. Thank you.
Okay. I have questions on that statement about a conflict of interest. Considering several resolution ordinances and agreements will be introduced on Monday night. Resolution 2016 dash 20 water allocation for March is one of the items we handle each month. Anybody have any questions on that? Next is a resolution supporting the Maryland Municipal League Priority for Restoring Highway User Revenues, Resolution number 2016 dash 21. Does anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, I've got one on that. I don't think it goes far enough. I think it says restore them, but what I would like to see is something that says, let's get what we've lost to the cities and the towns over the next five or six years or something. So not only to restore them to what they used to be, but to make up for the 90% that we've lost for the last, what, four or five years.
I, I agree and, and I think that if, this resolution particularly supports the legislation that was before the General Assembly this year, it can't, we can't reenter, we can't add anything, we can't put any more legislation in, but maybe next year we could add that to the, to the motion.
Keep it in mind for next year because I think we ought to try to get the money back.
Well, it, you know, it's, there's a whole lot of money that's, that's, that's missing and I think we, if we get this, this, over this first hurdle, then we can try for the second hurdle.
If I'm not mistaken, there was a bill filed that would restore all revenues in this calendar year.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I'm not certain that that's the one that got out of committee though.
Well, it's the, the bill that's, that's before the General Assembly and is moving forward, will establish a formula that will, that will provide predictability and, and the ability to plan for, for the future. Right now, it's just kind of whatever the whim of the governor in the General Assembly happens to be, that's, that's what we get. Fortunately, we have a governor that, that has heard us and has responded to our pleas. So I'm very encouraged about that.
Very refreshing.
But if, if we could get a, a set formula, providing for these funds like, like there has, has been since the 1920s, that will be a major, major accomplishment. So I agree.
I, I have a quick comment. I know in the resolution we talk about the difficulties that a municipality will face with the loss of these revenues, but I think it's also important that we should include a line in here about, you know, the citizens being adversely affected by this too, because ultimately it's going to trickle down to them. So I think it's important that, you know, when we send this, we include a line in there that says, you know, our citizens are going to suffer from the loss of these revenues too.
Well, I think that's a collective city. That's, the city as a whole.
Well, right, but I, I meant, you know, referring specifically to hardships encountered by citizens as a result.
We could probably make that amendment. Good point. Any other comments? Next is an annexation resolution, 2016 oh one oh oh one A, which is the Ballinger Park Annexation. We've owned a park across from the new Meads Crossing development for a number of years and donated to us by the Knoll family and, and the Ballinger family, I'm sorry, not the Knoll family. And we want to bring that into the city limits so we can develop it. Anybody have any questions on that?
I personally would like to see a map of this.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Maybe we'd go over and Mr. Weprickle kind of highlight with his finger where we're talking about. We all know Ballinger Park and what we're talking about. This is all the city-owned land, so it's beyond just Ballinger Park. It consists of 110 acres, a little bit more than that, across 194. So if you start with Ballinger Park, which is on the other side of Fringer Road, you take all of Ballinger Park that we got as the mayor stated. We recently bought the Garrett property, which is that piece there, so that comes in as well, that's going to be part of it. We own two parcels that connect those pieces to Fringer Road, so those pieces come in, they're city-owned property. So those are all the city-owned property and then to get this to be connected, there's a piece that belongs to Larry Flickinger that used to be part of the 194 right-of-way that was given to Larry Flickinger, estate surplus, and that's where Jim is pointing that is actually on the right-hand side of 194 if you're facing north or that way. So it's, there's no big bill that reside there. The city owns the bulk of the property. Mr. Flickinger has consented to this anyway. The purpose of this, there, there is no, there's no tax incentive, obviously. There's no water recharge credits because we already own it. The purpose of this is simply for regulatory purposes. You want to build anything in that park, now you will not have to go through Carroll County Development Review, you get to go to City of Tony Town Development Review. That means the city's planning commission is the one that makes the decisions about how the thing goes down. And so that's, that's the, the purpose behind it. We did not ask anyone else to join. We didn't go to the residents along Fringer Road. We didn't want to make it any more complicated than it needed to be and with this, it should sail through. And what I mean sail through is not only is there a public process here, so you're going to introduce this resolution and then it's going to sit for a while, but it also needs to go to the county and it has to be reviewed by the county and by Maryland Department of Planning. They need to review it. They can't stop it, but they have to give comment on it. And then it'll come back for a public hearing before you all and then you'll vote on it. And there has to be a bunch of advertisements. So it's quite a process. This will probably take another three or four months before you see it finalized. And that's the goal, is to get this done so that all of our plans for Ballinger Park can then happen.
Jay, at a recent Rexam Parks meeting, there was discussion of some federal help to help develop this fund. Do you have any update on that?
Not, I don't-
Bob Mitchell was talking about how exciting it would be to have that in the city limits so they could apply for some grant for the development.
There is, Don, there's a few remarks in Bob Mitchell's report about a planned meeting on the 15th of March with National Park Service.
Right, that's a good time to mention that.
So, yeah, my task was just to annex it. So after that happens, then the next people can take over.
That's a public meeting, isn't it, on March the 15th to hear about that?
And I've got one question, maybe just, you know, I'm not quite sure I understand it. On page number three, number nine, the fourth line down, it talks about a conveyance between Marjorie T. Zenz unto Marjorie T. Zens.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I don't have that deed in front of me, but that is accurate, that when they want to change something, if you're the property owner and you want to change something or give something or change the title, you convey it to yourself. At least in the 80s they did. Prior to that, you had to use a straw man, but, so that is accurate there.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Henry, can you, are we making any plans to extend water service to the area for when those residents out that way want to come inside of the city or?
Fringer Road, we have water service when Meads Crossing develops on that side of the city.
So it'll easily be able to come over for them if necessary?
And to give you more specifics, that we have to file what's called an annexation plan with the state. And currently, the draft, this is just a draft, is putting it into the, the six-year range. That doesn't mean six years in normal people language, that just means it's not on anybody's current plan. So it would be called the S6 and the W6, which would be long-range service.
Okay, thank you.
Do we still have the Carroll County Astronomers interested?
Yes.
So we're finally going to get this thing in the city so we can pursue that?
Yeah, it's in that six-year plan.
They're still interested.
Still interested.
Right.
Good.
All right. Any other comments? Next we have a charter resolution to discuss. Not many times do we talk about charter resolutions, but here is one. And this is CR 2016 oh one and has to do with the procedure, if we ever wanted to remove an elected official from office, how we would go about that. It's rather extensive. And anybody have any comments on any of that?
I've got a grammatical one on page one. Paragraph A, second line, the last four words, maybe, which may be given. I think they're, they don't belong.
Too many words, right.
Yeah. And then just above it, meeting, should be meetings, right?
Correct.
And one question on the last page, I guess it is, let's see, yeah. No, the one before the last. It says, when we vote, it's either a check mark or an X, right?
If, if there was an actual recall ballot, yes.
What if somebody puts in a big-
A big circle?
Circle, filled in. I don't know. Does that mean it's, it not counted as a ballot? Or could somebody pick on that-
They could.
As a means to say, wait a minute.
Do we have to specify a symbol or just say a marked?
Well, what we might want to do to clarify that is cut that paragraph off after yes or no. That's the important part. Because the best way to do this, like we've done every other election now, is electronically, because then there's no questions about the vote counts. So there would be no check or yes or X at that point, it would be a button push. But what we want to make sure we have is the ballot so that it says yes or no. That way, nobody is confused or less confused if that's happened. So we'll look at that and I'm going to talk to Clara about how the electronic votes go, but I'm pretty sure you've gone in and done it and you pushed the screen and that's, that's it, so.
What other comments do we have?
Well, I have a question. A question on section two, which is on page three. It says, and be it further resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Tony Town, Maryland, that this amendment and charter shall be in all respects be effective and observed such as with the 50th day after the date of adoption unless or on or before the 40th day thereof be presented to the mayor and city council of Tony Town, be mailed to petition for referendum. I've underlined those words in red in accordance with the provisions of the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland. That's section two, I've just read it. My, my question is that I'm surprised to see this in the packet today, that we have a proposal that's a charter amendment before us for consideration, because my reading of the Constitution is that, that in order to amend the charter, we need to do the referendum and then adapt an ordinance to implement it. Is, is that incorrect? What is, what is the reason that this 50 days provision, it seems upside down to me, if the referendum comes first to amend the charter and then the action of the council, why are we considering this today?
Okay, your, yeah, your interpretation's incorrect would be the short answer. There's two ways that charters get amended in, in the state of Maryland. One is by a petition from the people and there's an entire chapter of law in that code that tells you how you do that. And the petition of the people then comes forward and you have a referendum. And if the referendum is successful, then the, the people have put that charter amendment into effect. So that's one way it happens. The second way you amend a charter is when the government initiates it, which is this. And at that point in time, it's done by resolution, which you have here, is a normal process of passing a resolution. There is normally a state mandated advertisement period. And then the second, the period that the section you did, section two, is basically says, once you pass it and it's adopted, so it's finalized, it sits for 50 days. And if people do not want it to happen, they have 40 days to have a petition to take it to referendum. And if people do not want it to happen, they have 40 days to have a petition to take it to referendum so they can vote it up or down. If they don't do it within 40 days, it becomes effective on the 50th day.
Yeah, well, I guess part of my question was, uh, why is the government initiating this provision? Why did we do that? If this, this is the latter of the two you described, which is the government is initiating, enacting these new, new regulations. Why did we do that? I mean, who requested that?
Me.
Councilman Sam Betty.
Okay, I think it's a very.
Reason?
Yeah.
Very good reason. We have financial disclosure. We have campaign finance coming up, okay? We have, oh, I don't know, maybe somebody will go rob a bank. Maybe somebody will murder somebody. And there's nowhere in the charter that we have any enforcement for people who break the law.
Right.
So I think it's time. It's something that, that I think should be needed. I mean, what good is having a financial, anything if you can have a penalty phase? And we don't have any.
Okay, did you work to draft this language we have before us?
The city manager worked with the councilman, and then I vetted it and reviewed it. Then the whole group got together and talked about it.
Uh, on the first page, uh, at the bottom, it says, "Any elected official after having been censured by an act of the mayor and council, does the mayor and the council may, uh, be petitioned for recall or removal from office?" There's no recall provisions in the Maryland State Constitution for recalling elected officials. How do we implement a municipal act? When I read the municipal portions of the state constitution, they, uh, this would require a Maryland constitutional amendment to put a recall provision in, in a municipality because it says state, local, and municipal governments are bound by the constitution.
Yeah, that's not correct either. The local government provision of, the home rule provision of the Maryland Constitution, which is further done, it used to be Article 23A, now it's the local government.
Right, I read it. It has all three categories of government, state, local, and municipal governments.
Right, and so the local government article then has expressed and implied powers. And under the Express Powers Act of the local government, that gives the authority of electing and getting rid of all elected officials to the local governments, basically to the people, as long as they take care of it in the charter. And so a recall provision is a common provision. We would not be the only one. There are many municipalities that have that.
Yeah, I wanted to also ask a question on page two. Thank you for that answer. I'm not certain I agree with that, but I'm interested in what your perspective is on that. Um, there's, it says, it talks about poll watchers. We had a dispute over the poll watchers in the last election. They're allowed in the state election statute, but it looks like the state, the city is going to try to regulate poll watchers. The clerk will provide a set of poll watchers as, at the location selected by the clerk. And the clerk poll watcher shall not politic or against an official. The poll watcher shall not be an elected official or individual subject to recall vote. The poll watchers shall register with the Board of Elections no later than seven days prior to the date of the recall election. The first qualified voter to register as a poll watcher for each shall be entitled to be a poll watcher. The poll watcher shall not interfere or interact. Um, I watched, um, at Woolry's District, um, precincts as a poll watcher in the Raybeck election for Congress, and, uh, I had to interact with the, uh, with the, with the, with the election judges. What our job was as a poll watcher was to write down every name on the poll book so we could call and get the vote out. That's a normal, uh, procedure for, uh, a poll watcher. They're allowed in the state statute. Why is the town want to restrict people's ability to be observed? What happens in our election precincts? I don't understand why we'd do that.
Well, first, the state election law does not apply to municipal governments. Any, any of it doesn't apply. So the poll watcher statute that you're talking about doesn't apply. During the last election, we had a poll watcher. We had people who wanted to be poll watchers. And if you can think of a normal municipal election where you have candidates, it's easy to say, I'm a poll watcher for this candidate and they can sign up and they can come in. So that's a normal procedure. What they do when they're there is they're not allowed to interfere. So if they want to go write the books down, and I believe your poll watcher's here, and she didn't interfere, but she interacted and got the information and stuff, but she didn't interfere with the election. She couldn't interject herself into the middle of it. This one is a little harder if you actually put your head around the concept is that there isn't a campaign, there isn't a candidate. It's a person who is being recalled, so you're either for the recall or you're against the recall. So what we tried to do was capture the state con, the state language that says, we want poll watchers, we want to allow them in there, but how do you have a poll watcher when you don't have a candidate? So you basically, we put in there that, well, there's going to be sides. There's going to be a side that's for getting rid of the person and for keeping the person. And you can have a poll watcher from each side. Well, how do you decide who's on what side? So basically, it's a first-come, first-served, and you register saying, I want to be a poll watcher in favor or opposed. And that's how you capture the fact that, otherwise, you could have a room full of people and that would, in effect, really interfere with the election.
Well, why not two days, why seven days prior to that? I mean, where did you get that number? Did you just make that up?
Yeah, seven's reasonable.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, I disagree. I think this is more bad legal advice because, uh, the state law has had provisions for this for over 100 years. And to ignore what the state law says and say, the municipalities don't have to follow the, the long, uh, history of jurisprudence in the state on, on fair and just fair and fair elections is outrageous. To say that we don't have to, to follow, even look at state law, municipalities can do anything they want to do.
I, I understand.
Is that what you really meant to say?
Yeah, and I understand that the legal advice you're giving as a non-lawyer, a minute ago, you said state law didn't have any provisions for recall in it at all. And now you're telling me that the nonexistent state law recall provisions actually do address poll that.
You misunderstood me, I was talking about poll watchers.
Right, but you just said that.
Poll watchers are mentioned in the state law.
But recall elections aren't.
They aren't, they're not in the Constitution either.
So how would the state deal with poll watchers in a recall election? How would they do that?
Oh, there's, there's, there's instructions in the state, uh, and county statutes.
Okay, so the actual answer, so you know, is, since they don't have recall elections, they don't have poll watchers at those elections.
I'm talking about.
And since we are having, right.
Recall election in gathering wisdom from the state statute.
Right, and that's what I've tried to capture here. And you can say seven days or two days, but since the state doesn't have recall elections, there is no statute I can copy because they don't do it at the state. So I have to put something in here so that it can capture it for recall elections.
I'm suggesting we do not try to invent the wheel and spend tech staff time to do it when we have, uh, in, information that's available about what's been hammered out over 100 years of, of jurisprudence. That's what I'm suggesting.
And I, I've given you the practical side, and you can disagree with it, but the state poll watchers require you to be part of a candidate. What candidate would you be part of if you're a part of a recall election? I'm trying to help.
There'd be two sides to that.
And that's what I'm trying to capture, is that there's two sides. And so your point is, there's nothing in state law about recall elections.
Would you oppose, uh, striking the words "or interact" with the election judges? Because the whole purpose of a poll judge, uh, poll watcher is to interact with the election judges. Make sure they're honest, make sure they're keeping the books correct, make copies of the, of the people who have come and voted and the people haven't voted.
That's not up to me, that's up to your.
Would you agree to strike that from this?
That's not.
Not interfere, but it says "or interact" with the election judges.
That's not up to me. You, you all can tell me how you want it written.
Well, that's what I'm going to suggest on Monday. That's, you cannot do, this just makes poll watchers impossible if you can't interact with the, with the, with the process inside precinct.
Are you saying that the poll watcher can question the integrity of the election board?
Yeah, that's, that's the reason for their existence, pretty much.
You just said question their integrity.
The integrity of the election, that's right. I didn't mean their personal integrity, whether or not the election is fair, just and fair. I was chief judge at, uh, Free Town Precinct. We had five illegal people come in and try to vote. And if it wasn't for our poll watchers, we wouldn't have caught those people to come in and vote. They were paid to vote. They were offered dinners and money to come and vote at Free Town Precincts. In Anaronda County, this really does happen. And poll watchers are critically important to free and fair elections that have integrity.
Anyone else have any comments?
I guess I just have one quick question on the interaction issue, right? From, you know, from a non-political standpoint, right? If I'm, if I'm a poll watcher, right? And, you know, I have to use the restroom or something, does that, does that interaction clause forbid me from asking someone where I can find a restroom, or?
No, I think that we had our first poll watcher at the last election. And I think there was, everybody had common sense and realized that there were questions and this is where the ballot was, and this is how you do that. And when we were tallying the votes, they actually took special time and directed me to go through it with the poll watcher. So, uh, common sense is one thing. The other thing is, the interaction is, the poll watcher did not inject themselves into the process. It was, when you all came to vote, you all voted, you saw how the process went, and the poll watcher watched that. If they had an issue, they talked to the judge, they came up, but they didn't interject themselves into the process. They're not part of the election process. And so, um, you know, I'd be interested to hear, we, you, you were our first poll watcher. I, I don't know if they offered you anything to eat. You sat there all day, but other than that, the place was kind of open. And she wasn't allowed to touch any of the material because that would obviously be a problem. But I think everybody just had, used common sense, so.
Well, let me address one point to the council, if I might, Mr. Mayor, before we, well, put this aside. Um, with the automation of voting machines, uh, the poll book is not a written book.
Ours still is.
The way it used to be. And so as we automate this, if this statute is put into place in this way, um, the poll watcher has to be protected as a, as a way to overlook what's going inside of a precinct. And, uh, I think that we need to remove the word "interact" because you'd have, they have to have access to who has come into the precinct to vote.
And to clarify the procedure, ours is still a written poll book.
Well, that's today.
Well, that's what we're dealing with, and station number one where you.
We're dealing with a new law.
Well, just so we're clear, I mean, you can argue about that, but when you all came in and voted, there was a composition notebook that had numbered margins and everybody signed sequentially. So you could see how many people signed in, and they signed one after the other. And the reason that's so vital is that that number at the end of the day should match the total ballots counted and should match the actual registration book.
Exactly.
So that is how we do it. I don't know if you decide to do something different in the future, but that's how it's done currently.
And I don't want a poll watcher with no control on that poll watcher. To have a, a poll watcher that can do whatever they want, that just doesn't cut it.
I don't think that's what's happening here.
Well, if you cut the words out.
I think that you all are very upset about my poll watcher, and that's why this is coming.
I didn't even know she was there, I couldn't carry ass.
So this is a way to try to, to stop that.
This has nothing to do.
I made the same point about the Protection Act we're about to discuss.
This has nothing to do.
We're not adopting laws in order to attack specific candidates or specific, uh, people running for office. That's not what we're trying to do on the city council.
All right.
Free and fair elections where everybody has access to, to run and.
Thank you, councilman, for your comments. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, let's move on to ordinance, um, 21 dash 216, the cannabis dispensary overlay zone. Do you have any comments on that?
I do. I have been encouraging the council because the use and possession of marijuana is a federal felony. And I've been encouraging the council not to allow any dispensaries or growing facilities in the town. And if we adopt a overlay zone, and I know the planning commission has been working on this, and if they adopt a, a, of overlay zone, they establish places where the dispensing of marijuana, uh, medical marijuana under the current law would occur. So I intend to vote against, uh, an overlay zone to the zoning which would allow this to happen when it's a federal felony. I want to introduce a resolution for consideration to the council called the Resolution to Dispense in Place of the Zoning Ordinance, called the Resolution to Dispense Medical Marijuana in Tawnytown. And I want to, I have a copy for everybody on the council. You just take a copy, pass it down. I think I have, uh, to share a copy with you because I have one extra copy. Uh, Mr. Mayor, it says, "Whereas the Maryland General Assembly has passed the, uh, growing and processing and sale of medical marijuana, and whereas medical marijuana has not been researched and approved by the FDA, uh, I mentioned before that our own Congressman, Andy Harris, said there's only 12 people in the state of Maryland that would benefit from the medical marijuana for pain relief when he was at the Thunderhead Bowling Lane. And whereas although it is a federal crime to grow and distribute marijuana in any form, the Obama administration has ordered the Justice Department not to prosecute growers and distributors of medical marijuana. And whereas the new law in Maryland allows over 180 dispensaries to be set up around Maryland, dispense marijuana, uh, not only in pill form, but in flowers and leaves to be smoked, and medical marijuana in any form could be dispensed from storefronts in our own town, on our own main street. And whereas marijuana paraphernalia and possession of small amounts of marijuana has been decriminalized by the state of Maryland. And whereas the pattern for legalizing recreation of marijuana normally begins by legalizing medical marijuana, then decriminalizing marijuana paraphernalia, which has happened, and decriminizing a possession, which has also happened. And whereas the recreational use of drugs in the state of Colorado has shown that pot-related crimes increased 32 percent. Citizens' citations of pot went up 245 percent. DUIs involving marijuana went up 70 percent. Marijuana-related emergency room visits grew 57 percent in two years. And emergency room visits by teens increased 29 percent. Drug-related suspensions and expulsions in schools increased 32 percent. And marijuana-related traffic fatalities doubled. And whereas the city of Tawnytown does not oppose FDA-approved medical marijuana, three types of which are already studied and vetted and available in local pharmacies such as the CVS in Tawnytown. Whereas the city of Tawnytown does not promote the use of drugs, including the smoking of pot, be it that now therefore resolved that the city of Tawnytown will only dispense medical marijuana through pharmacies in Tawnytown, and that an ordinance be adopted to support the same. And I submit that as a councilman, from Council Fraser. If you want to stop the use of these dispensaries, you don't create an overlay zone to allow it in certain zones. You just, uh, uh, follow the advice of our congressman and have it dispensed only from pharmacies. So I'm going to move this for adoption on Monday with, uh, with your position instead of the work of allowing overlay zones in the ordinance for the distribution of a federally criminal substance.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
Well, I'm sorry, Brad, did you want to?
No, please.
I was just going to say, the entire idea of the, the dispensary overlay zone to begin with was, was the fact that we have no laws on the books whatsoever that regulate where a dispensary can go, right? And so obviously, we're, we're worried about families in residential areas, we're worried about children in schools. So that's the entire purpose of having, you know, the zone, the zoning law so that we know that it's not going to go someplace hazardous to, to, to public health.
Commissioner, uh, my councilman, Vic Leotti, do you agree with my point that if you adopt an overlay zone, that you will permit the growing of, and dispensing of marijuana in certain zones?
The issue with that, councilman, is that, again, we have nothing on the books right now to sus, you know, to regulate where the dispensary zone is going to go, okay?
Let's say I read this carefully.
Right, I understand that, all right? Um, but the issue, you know, with, with the pharmacy aspect of it and upholding federal law, right? I'm, I'm not sure what our capacity as a town to be able to do that in all sincerity, right? I mean, it's certainly something I could learn more about, and maybe our city attorney can speak to the pharmacy aspect of it. But, you know, as it stands, we have nothing on the books that's going to protect citizens of this town from where the dispensary zones are going to go, and that's the entire thinking behind this.
If the town would adopt.
Are we allowed to mandate a certain type of business, sell a certain thing? I mean, can we do that?
No, I mean, that's, that's the, the core of this. We all seem to want the same thing. We all, we all seem to want to not allow marijuana to be sold in Tawnytown.
Right.
But the, the hard part is, instead of making bold statements or blanket statements, is what authority do we have to regulate this? What power, what core municipal power do we have to say, you can't do that? And the example that I want to give, I guess to make everybody understand it, because, again, we're all working towards the same goal here, is liquor and liquor licenses. So if you go to some places, they sell liquor in grocery stores. Liquor is controlled by the state. Local governments cannot say where liquor and liquor can be sold. People can apply for a liquor license based on state law, and the concept is called preemption. When the state says this is the way it is, that's the way it is. So the only way local governments can address those types of things is through, normally, its zoning power. They can say, sure, you can get liquor and you can sell it in a grocery store, that's fine. But we're not going to let you have it close to a church, close to a school. We're not going to have it cert, so it is regulating it through zoning. And it's regulating the use, the sale of that through zoning. And the problem that you have with this, this one, the way, I mean, the, the concept is that you're basically saying it's a commercial use. CVS-type place is a pharmacy, that's a commercial use. So a commercial use is allowed in almost all of our zones but residential. What you're trying to say is that you have to have FDA approval. That, that's the bottom line of this. That's where if you cut this to the end, it's like, you have to have FDA approval to sell this. And we all know the FDA is not going to give approval to this because it violates federal law. That's a, a more closer example to a gun store, okay? If you have gun stores in town, basically, they're regulated by the feds. You have to get a federal firearms license, and they're regulated by the state. And the city can't pass gun laws. We can't ban or promote guns. We have to follow those because they're preempted by the state. But we also can't say you can open a gun store as long as you have your federal license, but not your state license. We can't dictate what you can and cannot have. And so the Maryland law dictates that you can sell medical marijuana without FDA approval. And so the Maryland law dictates that you can sell medical marijuana without FDA approval. If the city doesn't talk about zoning it in a certain way, then they can put it anywhere. And that's what we've been saying, is that this is the stopgap to say, we're not going to allow you to put it anywhere. Because the state's going to argue it's preempted, that you can't regulate this. And the example then, back to my gun store, is gun stores, when you go get your federal firearms license or your Maryland pistols and revolvers license, have to come in and they have to show that it complies with local zoning in order to get those other things. That's what we're trying to get here, is that we're trying to say, this store complies with local zoning because it complies with the rules we set up. And the rules that we're making here are basically telling an entity that you can't sell a certain product. And we had that problem when we dealt with the bath salt issues. We had that problem when we dealt with the synthetic marijuana issues, where we're telling people you can't do a certain product. We're much easier to regulate a use. You can't use a tattoo parlor, you can't have an adult video store, okay? An adult video store sells adult novelties. The Hallmark store sells novelties too. So we're classifying the use and we're trying to move that into a certain area. There might be lots of ways to peel this, but the reality is, the only way I think you can do it is through your zoning power. Or else you're going to be argued that it's preempted. If you lose your preemption argument, you have no protection. And that's what I've been saying, is that that's an easy argument to make for somebody to come in and say, the regulations you have are preempted by state law. If you lose, they can open the store wherever they want.
Right. May I have a follow-up? I want to address, is that okay, Mr. Mayor? The pharmacies, how are they licensed?
The licenses for pharmacies?
For the zoning on pharmacies, we have several pharmacies in town?
They don't obtain a license. They're commercial businesses that are in what we call-
So you can have a pharmacy anywhere in town that's zoned commercial?
Well, we have residential, commercial, those types, yeah. So if I wanted to open a pharmacy in-
Pharmacy's not mentioned in the zoning code.
It's a special key.
Pharmacy is a use in the zoning code.
I thought I'd seen it in the zoning code, which is where this comes from.
Right.
It says medical or medical supplies.
I thought I'd seen that in the actual municipal zoning law, which is where this came from.
Right. And so, I mean, I'm not trying to argue the point. I'm just trying to say is that if our zoning code says, I can have a business that says medical or medical supplies, and you think it's pharmacies, a guy that's selling medical marijuana that's licensed by the state is going to say, that's a medical supply too, and I want to do it downtown, then what do we do?
The entire idea behind this, and I feel like this is getting lost, is not that we want dispensaries in the city. It's the opposite of what we want. We're trying to make it as difficult as possible for them to be here. And by doing that, we're putting these restrictions. They can only be in a certain area. They have to be at least so many feet from residences, parks, et cetera. We're on the same side. The problem is, looking at this, if anyone challenged this, if they wanted to put dispensary in Tawny Town and they challenge this in court, it will be thrown away immediately and we will be left, as Jay said, with nothing at all. And then you'll have dispensaries next to City Hall. Well, pharmacies are notoriously extremely lax in their security. I don't want pharmacies to handle medicinal cannabis.
They do already. Oh, three different types are available at CVS.
Well, then, you know what? That's horrible because they're terrible with security. Constantly, they are robbed. I want them away from other places. I don't want them backed up to Creekside. I want them away from everything. And that's what we're doing with this.
Bradley, I don't, I don't believe they carry those products.
Yes, they do.
For you to go in and buy them tomorrow.
Well, you have to have a prescription for them.
And you have, they have to order them, from what I understand.
After a prescription, you have to order them.
They have to order them. They don't carry them on-site.
That's right.
And that's for a reason, okay? And that reason is what Brad just said.
But stop with that right there. How did CVS sell that if it's not licensed by the FDA right now?
Medicine. They get a prescription.
So when Maryland says you can get a prescription to get medical marijuana and it's legal, and I can do that right now, is what you're saying. I can go down there and order it. It's not on hand. They're going to send it in here. The FDA hasn't approved it, but I can do it. How does saying it only can be sold at a CVS-type business stop it? Because they're doing it right now.
You gotta, you gotta have the overlay.
Because you're saying it's happening now. And I'm saying that right now, it's not even legal in Maryland.
Right. Is CVS selling, do they offer for sale medicinal cannabis products? Do they?
That, in our research, they said yes.
They do?
I didn't have a prescription.
And you would like that to continue?
I think that the doctor congressman argued that there are people helped by, a small number that help. And they do do that under the Maryland law, just as our attorney has told us.
Right. I put very little credence into what he said. But you want it to continue that they can sell something that is not FDA-approved, but apparently they already have available for sale. Is that correct?
That is FDA-approved, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the difference, okay? That is FDA-approved.
Okay.
I think you're right about that.
What they've said is there's three types that are FDA-approved. But CVS doesn't store them. You have to order them, or CVS has to order them. And I'm assuming it's to prevent the same thing you're talking about.
Okay, well, the only other thing I'd like to say is there's a grammatical thing on that. Paragraph four, the word official, I think should be officially.
That's great.
Thank you.
Well, I feel like Agrippa tonight almost now persuades me to vote for the overlay.
Well, we'll have, we'll have to decide on Monday night whether we, what is the best way to restrict the sale of marijuana?
And the other thing you'll decide on that is if you, because this is being introduced, is whether you'll have, when you're going to have the public hearing, if you want to move forward with it. And remember, the goal you told us at the end of the year was, we want this as quick as you can. So the public hearing, if you want to do this, should be at the next work session.
So April work session.
If you have 160 being licensed, what's the likelihood we'll get a dispensary? Pretty likely, then?
I have my thoughts that we're probably geographically located to make that attractive, yes.
Right.
All right.
Thank you for your work on that.
Next is ordinance 22-2016, to be introduced again Monday night in this regards, addresses the code of conduct. Any comments on that?
On page one of this, no, no, I'm sorry, on page two, I agree with Bradley. This should be officially on the fourth whereas. Says whereas the matter is referred to the Tawny Town Planning Zoning Commission for review such comments officially given to the Planning Commission Zoning Committee. It should be officially there also.
I'm sorry, councilman, which page are you on?
Oh, this is-
Are you on the code of conduct, sir?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My error. Okay.
I almost had to borrow your glasses. I didn't see what you were talking about.
You found an officially on my resolution?
Oh, no, that was on-
Oh, but you found the same mistake.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Excellent.
All right. Any questions on the code of conduct?
Just a couple, if that's okay. On section B, under 7-19, what does it mean when it says the code addresses selective aspects of the government of the city? Why isn't it more specific? What aspects does it regulate? What does it mean when it says selected aspects?
It's dealing with the conduct of elected officials. Those are the selected aspects. It's not dealing with conduct of your employees, because that's under the employee manual. It's not dealing with the conduct of appointed officials, simply elected officials.
And why are we adopting an ordinance that regulates the elected officials? I mean, why do we want to do that? The elected officials are the boss. People elect elected officials so they can run the town. That's what they do. Why are we adopting an ordinance to encumber the elected officials from what they can and cannot do?
You're doing this under the charter rules that allow you to create rules for how you all interact with each other.
Why? Because we don't have any way of enforcing people who don't do the things they're supposed to do. Like this code of conduct retains-
Like take a minority position, how about that?
No, that's fine. You can do that all you want. But what you can't do is go out and say, well, let's see, we're discussing something, what's in it for me? That's illegal, okay?
Here's some wording.
We don't have any way to enforce that now.
Those include, among other things, others, the state of Maryland constitution, federal laws prohibiting discrimination and harassment. I think that this is fraught for abuse if you can bring a people up on charges for certain conduct-related things if they're elected officials. This is regulations on elected officials. You just heard it from our attorney, not on employees of the town.
Let me say something else, okay? You're not their boss. You've got to forget that too. You're a policymaker. You're not a boss. The boss here is Henry and Rick Weaver, and those guys are the boss-
Harry and I work for the city council and the mayor.
You are not a boss. You cannot go in there and tell people what to do. That is not your job. Your job is to make the people, to make the policy, and then it's up to the city employees to enforce that policy.
Okay.
It's not for you to go tell anybody that they have to do something.
You're going to have to have a civics lesson then about how a democracy works.
No, you're not in a democracy. You're in a republic, okay? There's laws and rules to be followed. That's the way a republic works, and this is a republic. This is not a democracy.
So who can file a complaint about conduct and can a resident file a complaint?
No, only you all. These are the rules between you all. These are rules between the councils. This is how the council operates. Let me give you an example, I'm making an easy example. If a councilperson harasses an employee, they come in and they harass them. They do something that is clearly not allowed in the employee manual. That if an employee did it to another employee, we'll make it real easy. It's a sexual harassment. A councilperson sexually harasses an employee. If it were a manager that did that under the employee manual, they'd be disciplined. We can fire them. We can get rid of them. It's no problem because they're under the employee manual and they're employees. What is the remedy if a councilperson does that?
What's the remedy if people harass a council member?
The federal law's protecting harassment, isn't it?
No, that's incorrect even from the audience. The federal law deals with the employer. The council member is a member of the employment. So the city of Tawny Town would be liable for the harassment of a councilperson that did it. But the individual would still be a councilperson.
Well, Mr. Gallow, I just brought it up because it says it also expected officials will treat each other, employees and residents, and business people. So it does mention residents. Can residents file a complaint against the city councilmen under the statute?
No, I told you the way it's written, it's not. And this is talking about how elected officials operate. This is completely about elected officials. And the example that it gave you was an easy one. There's more gray areas. But the easy one is, what happens when an elected official does something that harasses an employee? We can't fire the elected officials. We can't discipline them. We can't do anything to the elected officials. And that was why Councilman Zambetti said there needs to be things that the council can take care of each other when they violate that. That's no different, I mean, we find it odd because we don't have one, but a lot of this came from the rules of the general assembly. The general assembly, the senators and the delegates have their rules that they have to follow among each other. You and I can't go down there and file a complaint against them. But if one of them files a complaint against the other person, that's how they get thrown out of the Senate. I mean, remember Senator Larry Young, he was thrown out of the Senate because he violated their rules. Not that he violated the ethics rules of the state, he violated the Senate's rules. And that's what this is trying to capture, is that what kind of rules can the council have to keep them
accountable?
To each other.
I think accountability is the key here. And what we need to make sure of is that members of the council or the mayor don't think that they're above any sort of law. That needs to be important. And right now, there needs to be a law in place that keeps them accountable to each other. I think it's up to us sitting up here to keep each other accountable, that we're acting in an appropriate way, whether it's
Well, I think you're acting inappropriately.
Whether it's with each other, whether it's with residents or employees, whatever it is. But that's what this is entirely about, that we can work together and be accountable.
Has to be consequences for inappropriate actions regardless of what level you're on. Right now, we have none.
If a council member left these chambers tonight, went up to a resident on the sidewalk and smacked them, there is nothing we could do about that. We could all sit here and say, well, that was inappropriate. They don't deserve to be a council member, but there's nothing we can do about that. Lieutenant Etzler would do something about that, but even then, you could spend three weeks in jail and you would still be a council member. And that's wrong. We don't need that kind of an example sitting on this council.
The one that really worries me is making inappropriate statements. You know, for 20 bucks, I'll vote for you. And that's-
I have that circled in red.
That's something I can't put up with, okay?
I don't want an ordinance adopted that restricts elected officials from making statements.
Well, you've got to.
Elected officials have the ability to say what they want to say.
Charlie Brown wants to put in a tattoo parlor over here on the corner, right? And you go up to him and say, hey, for 50 bucks, I'll vote in your favor. We can't control that now. There's no way. You could say that all you want. You could go in front of some organization and say, I represent Tawny Town, without the authorization of the city council, and you are then breaking the rules. Because you can't represent the city unless you're authorized to do so. And there's no way to punish people.
Well, what will happen will be what happened in Texas, where small municipality, there's only one council member not facing federal charges at the moment. Because federal had to come in and fix it. It was that corrupt. This is going to help us prevent that, that we don't have a corrupt council, us or in the future. And that's the problem we've had, is that past councils have not had the forethought to get these things in place.
Well, they, you know, it's a different day and it's a different time. I mean, we, issues like these things have never come up before, recalls and code of conducts. And I mean, it's just everybody simply operated with common sense and good intent. And it hasn't been an issue, but there could be an issue in the future and we need to address it.
What's the plan for this to go forward? Can we submit comments? I have more than time allows. We're past our agenda time on this item. Things that are troublesome, that super empower certain portions of the local government to have authority over elected officials. And I don't want to see that enacted without some revision.
Well, what are your comments?
That's lengthy. Would you want me to go through all that?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to know what the planning time was. This is a new item. We've never seen this in our agenda before. It's called, it's called, it's called a code of conduct, a new ordinance. How long has the city government existed and never had this?
It's being introduced Monday. We'll have time to talk about this for the next, for as long as you want to talk about it.
Yeah, I would hate to see the majority of three ram this down our throats.
Look how long we've troubled with this campaign finance thing. That's gone on for months and months and months.
Mr. Mayor?
Haven't told we got it right.
Let me ask a question. Jay, is there to be a public hearing on this, like there is with the charter, or?
No, this is just an ordinance. It's subject to the public process, but there's no requirement for a specific public hearing on it.
But we have tonight being public, we have Monday night being public.
Right. This is an ordinance, so the normal ordinance is you introduce it at one meeting, which is not a set of meetings for us, and you can't pass it till the next set of meetings. If you decide you want to pass it. If you don't, you want changes, then the idea is you're supposed to work those changes through.
So we will not pass this on Monday, correct? We will pass this in April if we choose to do so.
If you all love this tonight and you said this is the best thing ever and there's no problems, you couldn't pass it till April anyway.
Anyway, right.
Even if you all loved it, okay? So it takes that long to make it happen.
So, Councilman Frazier, would it be fair to ask that you type out your concerns and send them to each of us, since we have until April to really dissect this?
Yeah, there's a couple of them. I'll just give you a hint about what might be in it. I'll do that. I told Jay on another matter, I had 15 questions on the incumbent protection act, but I have not gotten in those. The, the, the one thing that bothers me is the specific wording. Let's see if I can find it here, because it just seems so targeted. It says, officials enjoy substantial influence within the city hall. This authority must not be exercised in a manner that intimidates staff or degrades morale with resulting to damage to the fabric of the organization. Well, twice I've been brought into executive session accused of things I'm innocent of since I've been on the council, one with the information person and one with the-
We don't talk about personal sessions.
Councilman, you may not, you may not speak of closed session.
I've got an attorney and you're going to speak to me about it, that I was falsely accused of things since I've been on the council. And this sort of thing, would it give you the power to take action against a person just based on the fact that you have three votes and we have two votes?
No. People vote on, based on the facts, I would hope. That's what the decision- That's what decisions are made.
If there's sufficient facts to support an accusation, what else are we to do?
That should always be true.
I just think it's fraught with abuse. The majority will dominate the minority if you adopt this policy. As long as the town's been together, we've not had a written policy that allows the councilmen to gang up on one another based on a majority and minority opinions.
We're all anxious to hear your comments on this, and anybody else's comments for that matter. I think, my, you know, I don't vote. I administer, I preside at this meeting. There's a lot of issues, a lot of questions I have about it too. You know, it's a very far-reaching policy. Is it something we want, a question we need to ask ourselves, is it something we want to do we want to be that far-reaching? Do we want to make it more general? Those are issues we've got to discuss and think about.
I just want to know whose idea it was to come up with this.
The need is there, there's no question about the need. You absolutely have to be held accountable for inappropriate actions. If there's no mechanism to do that, that's foolishness. We hear that every day on the news, how this public official or that public official abused his power because there was no ramifications. And that's what we're trying to prevent. We've got to make some ramifications. This was also my idea, and you were sitting right here when I brought it up, four or five months ago. And the reason I brought it up, and we didn't do anything on it, is because we've been busy doing other things, okay? That took a lot of our time. But the point of the matter is, if we're gonna have financial disclosure, we're gonna have that type of stuff, and we're gonna have nothing to enforce. I just don't understand how the city got along for so many years without anything like this. I mean, if you're gonna influence some people, or have some people influence your vote, today, you can't be punished for that. And that's illegal. That's against the rules. I don't know why you are always objecting to something that makes things legal. You're always objecting to it, and it makes me wonder why you do that.
Well, I just said the same thing about the Incumbent Protection Act.
And it's not the incumbent's protection. All right, let's move on. We've had more time on this than we need to spend on it tonight. We're more than a half an hour behind on our agenda.
This is Tawny Town.
We're gonna move into ordinance number twenty-two thousand and sixteen, campaign finance reform, and that will be up for adoption on Monday night. We did a wonderful job at our retreat in tweaking that and fine-tuning that. I think we've got a product we all can be proud of. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? Yes. After all the time we spent, okay? Something dawned on me over the weekend. We have no protection in here for the self-financed candidate who has a dirty trick played on him, and contributions make to him anonymously in the form of cash or anything else. If you have somebody running and he's got a budget of five hundred dollars, okay? He gets a check in the mail for a donation of ten dollars. That then makes him become a financed, okay? Or if he gets cash.
You don't have to accept it. If he accepts it, right.
And we don't have any provisions in here that tells him what to do if he gets. I think he can go in the affidavit he signs, okay? But I think we need to cover a dirty trick played on somebody by somebody else that says, wait a minute, this guy is running now, I gave him a check for fifty, I gave him fifty dollars cash. And, you know, he didn't file all the forms because he's no longer self-financed, because I gave him money.
Okay, we could, I mean, it does address the tangentials of this, that you can't accept cash over twenty-five dollars. But that was, that was what we said in here.
Well, yeah, but, okay.
Okay, so if a candidate, if I walked up to a candidate and said, "Councilman Wance, here's a hundred dollars. Here's five twenties. You're gonna have to give four twenties back," right? And I say, "Sorry, I can't take this. I can only take twenty dollars." That's one. If somebody submits an anonymous donation, so the envelope of cash, because I imagine if it's a check, it's not too anonymous.
Low number out-of-state starter checks.
Right, but one of those things, no anonymous donations are allowed. And all those donations need to be turned over to the city, because the city spends it as part of its general fund. So again, if it's a cash anonymous thing, done, the city does that. I mean, not cash, if it's a check. If it's a cash, a bundle of cash, the candidate's required under this already to turn it over to the city, and then the city handles it as part of its general fund. So there's really not a way that the candidate can have money infused unless they take it. And if they take it, that's the thing.
Right, if they act responsibly, they'll turn it over to the city or
And so you're a self-funded candidate, and I write you a check for a hundred dollars all above board, I want to give you this, I really believe in that, here's a hundred dollars. And you're like, if I accept this, I'm not self-funded anymore, I'm sorry, I can't accept your donation, and
Did we move to a hundred dollars based on my suggestion at the workshop? Or is it currently a twenty-five still?
The hundred dollar is my example about a check that was given to me.
Now, can you answer my question?
I'm not sure what your question is, because my
At the workshop, I suggested we move the twenty-five dollar cash limit to a hundred dollars.
Right.
Was that done?
No.
Or was not done?
That was not done.
No.
Consensus holders, if we wanted to leave it alone.
Do I ignore you? I don't take my orders from any individual councilperson. Everybody sat there and you had consensus about what you wanted, and then you said, put it in that ordinance, and then you would vote on it on Monday. So if on Monday you'd like to amend the ordinance, you can do that, but I don't take orders from any individual councilperson. I take orders from all of you collectively.
I thought we had a consensus on that.
No, we didn't.
No, we did. We left it at twenty-five.
If you move for that amendment
We had the opposite of consensus. Nobody wanted to do it.
If you'll make that motion on Monday, I will second that.
Because I think that's reasonable. Twenty-five dollars isn't even in a bill in the United States currency.
Okay. Yeah, and I
Pulls out a fifty-dollar bill out of their wallet, say, I want to give this to your campaign.
Right, and I agree with you.
That was my point at the workshop.
The question I have, Jay, is on section eighteen-two C. Talks about the second report to be filed with City Ethics Commission fifteen days before the election. Fifteen days, does that make it a Sunday? Wouldn't fourteen days be a Monday?
B, B is
C, well, C is the one I'm referring to. Excuse me, oh, excuse me, it is B, because C has a little
Fifteen days before an election.
Right. Elections on a Monday, fifteen days prior would be a Sunday, is that correct?
Right.
So it should be fourteen days.
On that day, fourteen days.
Right.
Good catch.
And it's also on
It's gonna be in every one of the
Yeah, eighteen-four C, yeah. You'll know where they all are.
So, Councilman Zambetti, the way that kind of works is, if you accept a donation, then you've done it yourself.
Well, I agree with that, but I'm just saying that I would like to have it somewhere, that he clearly understands what he has to do if somebody makes him an unsolicited contribution of any sort, okay? And as far as I'm concerned, it can go in the affidavit he signs, right?
Something to the effect of any unsolicited contribution must be returned, or
To the Ethics Commission or somebody.
Will be, you won't be considered self-funded anymore.
Absolutely. That's all I'm asking for.
In lieu of, in lieu of forfeiting it to the city, can there be an option that they donate it, like they would excess funds, and then provide a receipt of that donation?
I think the theory behind that is that gives them the authority to use it to some advantage.
Okay.
Transparency.
No problem.
The other way.
No problem.
All right, any other comments?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, just in conclusion, that I have studied the Citizens United versus the Federal Elections Commission case in detail since our last meeting, and I believe that the basic thrust of this ordinance is in violation of the idea that donations are speech, which is the current interpretation of the federal law overturning McCain-Finegold. And so I think it's insane for the town to require this sort of reporting. I've asked for a thousand-dollar waiver, and Councilman Foster agreed at our thing. I see the five-hundred-dollar change, but that's only for self-funded people. That waiver doesn't apply to every candidacy, just self-funded people.
I made every change that you all directed me to make. I can go through them all. If you all want to fight among yourselves about what they should be, but as the consensus came out
Just, I want some clarity about what's being enacted, since you said you were gonna enact it on Monday.
We said, what we said was, it would be increased to five hundred dollars for self-funded candidates. We never mentioned anything else.
So there's no waiver for anybody else, unless they're self-funded?
If, what would you want a waiver for?
That's what I said over and over, that in nineteen ninety-four
Why don't you listen once? Let me finish a sentence before you start again.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay? Why would anybody that's not self-funded want a waiver of money? Because they have to account for it anyway.
For the six
Why do you always object to transparency?
No, I don't object to transparency.
You do it every time. Man, I'm telling you, even the editorial writer in The Times, who I never agree with, okay?
The Bolner's son.
No. Well, I never agree with him, but he even said the same thing, okay? It's transparency, that's all we're looking for. And I don't see why you always object to something that's putting transparency into the system.
I just wanted clarity.
And then call it campaign finance, not whatever you think the name is.
I'm very concerned that the ordinances before us today are designed to protect the incumbents and to block access to the election and superpower the Ethics Commission.
I look at it as what you're trying to do is the one that's trying to eliminate the self-funded candidate from running for office.
No, no.
Because as long as you're pumping in money from some outside source, you're happy, okay? And you did it this time, and you did it when Joey ran. And what this does is say, if you're gonna self-finance, you can do it, as long as you don't spend more than five hundred bucks. But if you're being supported by somebody else, then you're gonna have to go through and make it transparent, that you're being funded by someone else. So this is actually helping the self-funded individual to be able to run for office and not competing with people like you who will take a donation from anybody, including the dog catcher.
And to that point, just so you know, for my campaign, if I decide to run again and somebody chooses to donate to my campaign, I would have no problem listing that and making that transparent. So I don't see the issue with this.
Well, then you're not, then you're self, not self-funded, and that's fine.
Right, and if it's transparent, I don't see what the issue is with transparency.
And that's right, and the point, the editorial Folks, this is just good government, that's all it is. As simple as that. And the editorial writer said, if you don't have Anything less than this, it's not good government. Bottom line. All right, let's move on. We're running way late. The Incumbent Protection Act, it's not. Let's talk about the city manager's report. Henry, what do you have for us tonight?
I feel like Ben Carson, you really want to hear from me?
Wait, no.
I don't have a city manager's report.
It was in your packet.
This one right here.
Okay, here it is. Out of order.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're winding down the E and R upgrade project. We're about to begin possibly, I don't even remember what today's date, we may have already started the thirty-day process of testing of the facility. The water billing system is sort of hung up a little bit in contract language, but we're probably getting through on that. Should be moving forward on that rather quickly. The MIA grant that we got to replace the streetlights with the LEDs, the lamp heads are on order and the pedestal work has begun, is going to begin before the heads arrive. And so we're making progress with that. We're also submitting a second grant as well at this time for more for next year. The, now, as you recall, on Saturday, the direction was from council to expand the capital projects and equipment to go out further than we are, so we're starting to work on those now. Just a reminder for everyone that the budget workshop has been changed, the date moved to the thirtieth. I've heard from everyone with the exception of Councilman Frazier, so I wanted to make sure that you are aware that that has been moved.
I've been monitoring your email conversations.
Which I didn't respond, so
I'm not sure where you are on that. Which date have you chosen?
The thirtieth.
Okay.
All councilmembers weighed in with the exception of you, so
Seven o'clock, right?
That's right. And that is
Questions for Henry. Are any questions on any of the departmental reports?
Yeah, I kind of have one, and Councilman Frazier, I'm a little confused. You were saying that, what, March fifteenth was
I was following up with what the
Parks and Rec
Mayor had said, we're meeting with the National Park Service to look at
I think that's what I picked out of that.
I had heard of it, I wasn't certain of the exact date in time.
Right.
If you can clarify that, that would be a great help.
New scheduled date for the visit of the site is March fifteenth.
Okay, right, all right. I thought you were talking about the Parks and Rec meetings, and that's on the sixth.
This is the
This is a really special day where the National Park Service is gonna come
This is the meeting we've been trying to get for a year and a half.
Right.
Now, this is a very special day.
The Ides of March. Beware the Ides of March. Okay. Move into the legal report, Jay. What do you have for us tonight?
Just all the ways of ending the resolution.
The only thing I'm gonna put in your head is that we need to talk about the election for next year. Remember, we were talking about changing the filing deadlines so that there would be a certification. That was our working concept. And so the campaign finance report has built those dates into that. If you've noticed, the fourteen days and things have been built into an idea where, right now, it's basically May first, this is just for information, okay? We're gonna go over it in detail some other time. But May first, twenty seventeen is the election. That will be the election day under the normal deal. Three weeks prior to that is the absentee ballot period, that's April tenth. And four weeks prior to that is the time that you can register to vote, and that would be April third. And the notice goes into the paper seven weeks prior to that first date, which would be March seventeenth. Means again, this next year. And so the theory then would be, instead of having a four-week period, we'd make that a five-week period. Okay, so you could keep all the other dates the same. You could say, still advertising March seventeenth. That gives people two weeks to decide, hey, I'm gonna run. The candidate period is five weeks out instead of four weeks out. And the certification period is still at the four-week mark, so nobody has lost any time of campaigning. It's the same time period. And basically, that five weeks gives the Ethics Board one week to get together and deal with all the certification issues. And what that means for a candidate is, if their forms aren't filled out right, that's the week of grace, if you will, where you have the opportunity to work back and forth and get them filled out. But by four weeks prior to the election, if you haven't complied, if they're not filled in, then you're not certified, then you wouldn't be on the ballot. And now you have something that's happening four weeks in advance instead of one week in advance, and that's what we had intended. So just think that through. When it's time to do that, I'll write it all out for you. But when we did the campaign finance forms, that was also so that that doesn't change. Because the campaign finance forms are dealt with when you file, two weeks before, seven days before. So it still works with whatever schedule you want to deal with, so we don't have to hold up the campaign finance till we deal with this. And I wanted to let you know that in case you thought about that in your sleep. And that's the only part of that you need to be aware of. The other thing is, we talked about, Councilman Frazier brought up before, is your ethics forms are due at the end of this month. The Ethics Commission will get together, and they're gonna come up with the who's naughty and who's nice list, and then they'll publish that at the next meeting to tell who hasn't filed and who has, and things like that. So be on the who's nice list.
What's the official date? End of the month? Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, Friday. And that's Good Friday, and the offices are closed, so
Have it in the fourth twenty.
It would be benefit to you to get it in prior to that.
I just didn't want to be thrown back at you as the end of the month.
Right, so it's the twenty, it is absolutely the twenty-fifth.
You can turn them in before that, obviously.
You can turn them in before that, obviously.
So sooner the better.
Already done mine.
Turn mine in today.
Mine right here.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Jay? All right, next we have unfinished business. We had an issue about street sweeping on West Baltimore Street. Anybody have any comments on that?
Ms. Archie, you want to talk about West Baltimore Street?
I haven't heard of that.
You already talked about it.
I don't know.
All right, we'll, we'll have time for comments. Yeah, nobody has any comments.
I just, were you okay with just canceling the street sweeping?
Well, I, I think that's kind of like over and, and, and beyond.
We haven't made any decisions. Everything's the same as it was, everything, nothing has changed.
Nothing's changed.
So if, if, so the, basically, if someone wants to bring up a motion on Monday night to change something, they can do that. But right now, nobody seems to have any opinion about it.
Okay, I wasn't sure where we stood on it.
That's all we gotta do. All right, let's, any other unfinished business? All right, let's move into the new business section then. Monthly financial reports. Anybody have any comments on the monthly financial report? That'll be up for approval on Monday night. All right, Harry Nun, how about accounts payable? Anybody have any comments on accounts payable? Harry Nun, moving into the cable finance agreement, or franchise agreement, I'm sorry. And this, you recall, we talked about it in January, we've, we've, I'll have the opportunity to look at the nuts and bolts, and I personally don't find anything very honorous in it. We need to approve that agreement Monday night, shall we, if, if we shall. One thing I'd like to mention, that tomorrow Carroll County Regulatory Commission is meeting, and our representative on that committee has resigned, and I've asked a couple people, and have not had any success in getting that replacement. Would anyone care to attend that meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 at the county office building? If not, I will attend, but I would certainly, wouldn't stand in your way if you wanted to attend.
Sounds like you got a lot of...
I think it's you, Mr. Mayor.
It's pretty exciting stuff.
And you look ready for it.
I can imagine.
Am I correct that the Carroll Media Center has signed off on the franchise agreement now? That they've looked over it and everything?
I talked with Marion Ware this week, and she did not indicate that that happened.
For some reason, I thought there was a report from them saying that they were okay with it, but maybe I made that up. Okay.
Now, speak to you citizens, if anybody would be interested in participating in the Carroll Regulatory Commission, I'd be certainly happy to consider your resume, I'll put it that way.
Even if you don't have one.
Doesn't have to be very lengthy. Now, seriously, we're, we're, this is an important committee. It, it helps regulate the cable franchise that is provided for our county. Municipalities get money to allow the cable franchise to function. We're using our streets and our airspace, basically. And we, we need to make sure that our interests are represented on this committee. So all municipalities are represented, as well as the county is represented. And perhaps the CC, or the CCC community, CMC, in the future, but we don't know that yet. So anyway, I'm looking for a volunteer to serve on that committee. They only meet a couple times a year, so it's not a big deal, but tomorrow night's one of them.
Do you wanna switch places tomorrow, you go to Annapolis, I'll go there? Or did you decide, we don't, we're not going there?
I don't, I'm not sure we need to go. I've got two, there, there were two meetings tomorrow night. One was the Cable Regulatory Commission in Westminster. The other was a meeting on volunteerism down in Annapolis that the, for, that the, that the state's putting on. And I wanted to try to go to one or the other, but I can't go to both, I can't bi-locate, so... I'm not sure the volunteer thing is that, is worth the trip, but the CCR is important. Anyway...
Moving on.
We'll decide.
That's coming up Monday night, and I'll have a fresh report for you.
Should, should we move the cable franchise agreement up for approval?
Yeah, it should be up, should be up for approval. At the workshop retreat, there's some discussion about adding a part-time person...
You skipped one.
Number four.
Oh, constant yield tax rate, oh, I'm sorry. Checked that off too soon. Our constant yield tax rate is, is, is a mechanism where we can, that we have to approve to either keep our tax rate the same, or to raise it, or to lower it. If we keep our tax rate the same, the revenue will increase over last year. We've gotta publish that fact. The reason the revenue will increase with the same tax rate is because we have higher property values, or there's more property that are, that have received assessments. So we get the benefit of that. Over the last eight years, we've, we've had negative growth there. We've had, we've had the, the revenue that's generated from our property taxes decreased year after year after year, and we've had to dip into savings. This is the first, first year where we've, where we've, we've had a positive flow in that regard. So I recommend we approve the constant yield tax rate. That's what that's gonna be about on Monday.
Do we have the data on that? What is the constant yield rate? What is the rate that would result in the same amount of resident revenue coming in from the increased property tax rates? Is that data come to us yet?
Yeah, we can get that data.
Yes, it has.
Can we get a copy of that? Can I get a copy of that?
That's easily, easily obtained.
I don't see it in the reports here. I don't know what is the...
We can email that to you.
Okay, thank you, that would be great.
All right, and the next item is a consideration for a new position in finance. We need direction on whether to proceed with that. Issue as discussed at our retreat, we're preparing the budget, and we need to know whether to include that in the budget or not.
Well...
You know my opinion, and...
Well, if I may.
Starting to share...
Councilman Vigliotti asked for some additional information. And this is one you've already seen, but take one, pass it down.
Glad to have that, that's all I'm receiving.
And then, same is true here. This, this document here is all of the tasks that are new. Can you remember the ask for all the stuff, all the tasks that are new?
Thank you. Mr. Hind, you said at the workshop meeting that the new water billing system will not save any staff time. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Did you say that?
Yes, I did say that.
Yeah, why would we implement the new system if it adds to the staff requirements? Isn't it more efficient?
It doesn't add to the staff requirements, it's pretty, it's pretty much the same.
You think it's pretty much the same?
Staffing levels will not change, no.
I was curious about that. I was expecting the upgrade would result in efficiencies.
It'd be in some efficiencies in processing, but it will not be any efficiencies in manpower. You still have to have someone who's gonna, you know, generate the bills. You still need people who's gonna take the money in. You guys still need people who're gonna post the bills. So from that perspective, the efficiencies and the newness are more in the area of, well, we have a, one of the things that we have is, you got a printer down there that should be in the Smithsonian. And if it ever breaks, you know, we're gonna be in a little bit of trouble. So that's how old this stuff is that we're doing. Other thing is, it's gonna be the ability for residents to sign on to the website and see what their water and sewer bill are, and a history of, of, of that kind of thing. So those are improvements over what we currently have. There are others as well, but those are kind of the significant ones. They'll also be able to pay the water bill with a credit card online. So those are the, the areas of efficiency that we're gaining, just a few to mention.
I didn't mean to interject, if you wanna explain your handout.
I'm sorry?
Did you have more to say about that handout?
No, other than I, this is, this is what Bobby Joe prepared, that are tasks that are new and additional, and there's a reason for, on the right-hand side, why those, those things have occurred.
Like, I, you know, I'm, I'm, a personal loss, if, if we can prepare all these detailed reports, why, why we're running behind? I, I just don't, don't understand that. But nevertheless, I'm not gonna talk about personnel matters tonight. But we need to discuss, we need to think hard, long and hard about this. Adding another staff person is, that in my opinion, we're, we're not, that's, that's not justified. But, but that you're gonna be here to make a decision to make.
Can I ask a question about that? Mr. Mayor, did you say that just a few years ago, we had two positions, which was Director and Clerk?
It was one position.
One position.
One, one person, was it both of those offices?
So there was one position who was doing both, both jobs.
When was that?
That was only three years ago.
Three years ago, yeah, three years ago. All right, and that's, then throughout our history, that goes back to 1754. Maybe not that far.
All right, so what we'll do with that one as well, we'll move that up for consideration for approval.
Yeah, that'll be consideration for approval, too. We can vote on that. All right, next the time for public comment on any of the things that appeared on the agenda. Would anybody like to make a comment on anything we discussed tonight?
Can I, can I ask another question before we go forward to that?
Okay, sure.
Uh, there was another position in cooperation with MML, where we took part of our town-county agreement and gave some of the money, all the towns together, it was discussed Thursday night at J and P Pizza.
That's with the county, the NPS.
That's gonna be acted on Monday? What's, what's happening with that new position?
It's not our position, it's the county's position.
I wanna be, when's the vote on that?
Well, I don't know if there's really gonna be a vote on it, there, there...
We, we, we signed an agreement to...
We signed an agreement, it basically says that...
Allow that to go forward if it were needed.
Well, I, I just wanted to report, if it's all right, that I talked to Commissioner Rothschild about this at that event, and they knew nothing about the event. So what MML is apparently...
They don't know anything of it?
That's, they, that, he said that we don't, not discuss that position and not hiring that position. And that apparently what MML has done is gone to the towns and gotten the town-county agreement, and then put pressure on the commission to...
MML, no input this whatsoever. MML's completely off, out of, out of...
No, I talked to Mayor Rupp about it also. I sat with him.
You may have talked to him at the chapter meeting.
Yeah, over at J and P Pizza's.
Right, but this is something the county came to us about, not MML.
But it does cost town money.
So, the, the, the eight municipalities agreed to fund this position if it were necessary, when they just, when they signed the NPS position.
You, I don't believe you were even on council at that time, so you wouldn't be voting on it.
So you agreed to take money out of your town-county agreement to fu, fund an additional person in that department, making the...
I didn't do that.
I mean, I mean, the town agreed, pardon me. I didn't mean to say it personally.
And, and exchange for that, Don, the, the county agreed to pay for 80% of our stormwater management project. If we have to do a stormwater management project, county's gonna pay 80% of it.
Oh.
Yeah.
And you and, you all agreed, eight municipalities to do, what, what was it, about $6,000 or something? Is that correct?
Something with my reelection.
All right, I just wanted clarity, whether we were gonna, that was gonna come before us or not?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the original agreement. Okay, that was done a year ago.
All right, thanks for clearing that up, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I realize, Council, how you gotta be pretty reserved on how you speak to one another occasionally. I believe you'd like to get a little more forceful, but I understand why you can't, but I can. I'm gonna be pretty direct. It says here, Charter Resolution CR 201601, Removal of Elected Officials From Office. Councilman Frazier said, I don't know how many times, why? Why? Then you go down here to Ordinance 222016, Code of Conduct. How many times did he say, why? Why? And then the campaign finance, he seemed to be standing alone on that. And my answer to why is you. You at times act like a wild man for these last 10 months.
We shouldn't have personal attacks.
Something that's never, in my 50 years attending these meetings, that I've ever seen anything like it. Have you watched your cell phone TV? The community has, and I don't think you could stand the recall election, my friend.
Now, let, let's hear about items that were on the agenda. Any comments? Anybody have any comments?
Thank you for the, stopping the finger pointing, which also, you could've stopped. Mr. Zambetti was doing quite a bit of finger pointing at Councilman Frazier. This is why I'd wished we could have comments, public comments, as we went along, so it's gonna be too cumbersome, which I'm sure everybody's happy about. But I'm gonna have to, I guess, submit a lot of my comments. I'm here, I'm here also as No Cannabis in Carroll, so I will submit, I'll submit an email to our members. We have over 60, we'd have many more if I had time to really inform people about what was going on. But I, I guess, there was a little bit of a perception that if, when we did our presentation for No Cannabis in Carroll, this room was packed of people, supporters, and we had many more than showed up. And I'm just getting the impression, and I just wanna correct that perception if I'm wrong, that if I can't chuck in and fill, chuck this room full of people every time I come for, about this cannabis issue, that somehow it's just Councilman Frazier and myself that are having a problem with it. So that's kind of a problem. I spent a lot of hours, a lot of these citizens do not know what is going on with the medical marijuana. Many of them, like me, initially thought that it was a THC, FDA-approved THC pill, until they found out that it was actually smoking weed.
May I interrupt just one second? You're talking to the wrong audience. We can't do anything about the state law. You gotta talk to the legislators. They're the ones that can do something about the state law. All we can do is, is what the law directs. And no matter how many people you fill up this room, and no matter how often you say that you're against cannabis in Maryland, there's nothing we can do about it.
But the state law, the state law isn't directing you to put anybody into this town.
We're not?
They're not directing you to do that, just like, well, if, if the state law, you know, legalizes prostitution, it doesn't mean you have to put a warehouse into Tonny Town. Just because the state does something that's highly, that's against federal law in the first place, doesn't mean that the city has to go along with it. Anyway, my point was, is that just because we're not filling up the room with people from No Cannabis in Carroll, there is a large group of citizens, and our title is No Cannabis in Carroll, and so that's what we're standing for. And as voters and citizens, we appreciate Councilman Frazier's no tolerance policy on drugs. And I do understand the overlay zone, there's some, I have some technical things which I'll send you, they're just typos, actually. But just for example, this use of language here is, it says patience in a safe and effective manner. That's a second whereas clause? Hold on a second. This is just, just one example. No Cannabis in Carroll would object to the city's use of the phrase "safe and effective manner" within this proposed ordinance, even if it was copied word for word from the state. If it is a word-for-word quote, then it should be quoted as such. This may seem picky, but language has power, and people reading this ordinance could possibly be misled into believing that the city of Tonny Town is saying that if smoking pot makes you feel better, then it is safe and effective medicine, which it is not. The city has done... The city has done no studies to show this, and cannot use the city to promote an unsupported idea from the state of Maryland, which is, in many people's view, acting as a new FDA drug dealer.
Where would they get that idea? That the city wants people to smoke pot?
Because if it's in the city ordinance, it's safe and effective, it promotes the idea that the city is supporting it. And even under your new code of conduct, the city should not be... I mean, you said we're all on the same page, and actually, we're not on the same page. I am glad to see the shift that has occurred about the dispensaries. But no Cannabis in Carroll still has major concerns about the growers and the processors that may try to come into Tawny Town.
Which, again, we have no way of controlling unless we do it through zoning, which we're trying to do.
Right. But you're not including... Your zoning... Proposed zoning legislation only includes dispensaries. I'm not seeing any language about growers or processors. So, you know, to put it out there that we're all on the same page, you're going in the right direction, and I'm certainly happy for that from where we started. And actually, you know, I thank Mr. Gallow for tipping us off about what was coming down the pike on the dispensaries in the storefronts in Tawny Town, and I'm glad that got everybody's attention. So, I hope you can see that the citizens' involvement in this is a contribution, but again, I want to make that clear distinction, that where you all are moving toward zoning the dispensaries, that's great. I have no objection to it. I don't like the word, the use of saying "safe and effective" in the resolution because it's coming...
But what we're doing is restricting the dispensaries. Right now, there is no restrictions. Just like there's no restrictions on growing it...
Right.
That facility that's proposed for the industrial park is perfectly legal to be there. We can't do anything to stop it.
Why can't you?
Unless we would have created an overlay zone five years ago before it got here. That's what we're trying to do with the dispensaries.
Okay, it's not here yet. Why can't you use the zoning ordinance to also... No Cannabis in Carroll is asking you to not only include the dispensaries, but also growers and processors of medical marijuana. Once you guys are doing that, then we'll all be on the same page. So, I just wanted to correct that misperception, that the citizens that are in my group don't share... We're glad that you're restricting the Main Street problem with dispensaries. It's a disaster. But we are also concerned about growers and processors in Tawny Town. And so, I hope somebody, one of you two, or anybody, would add language that would include zoning restrictions on growing and processing as well, because they're not licensed yet. They're not here. So, you do still have time. That could be inserted... That language could be inserted immediately.
Where do you get the "safe and effective" language that you're talking about?
It's in the...
Second paragraph, Councilman.
Okay.
Of the cannabis dispensary optimism.
Let me point out something. We are not moving in the direction of dispensaries. We have never been in favor of dispensaries.
Correct.
So, it has nothing to do with moving in favor of or against. We've always been against dispensaries, so...
But you weren't aware that when this first came out, as many people weren't, that what you... The letter that you sent promoting this was, when they got their license to grow, they could get a dispensing license, and you didn't understand...
They don't get a dispensing license with it.
Yes, they do.
Oh, no, they don't.
Yes, they do.
No, they don't.
Well...
Well, all right. For the sake of time, because of the late hour...
Right.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, I'm going to put the rest of that. As to... I'm just curious, how long have you been mayor? I mean, how long have you lived here? Or mayor, been involved in this?
Thirty-some.
So, in 30 years, in 30 years, this council has never had to have campaign finance legislation, removal of an elected official legislation, and code of conduct legislation, until suddenly the citizens, who are very upset about the high water rates, elected Don Frazier. And suddenly, all H seems to be breaking loose. You talk about transparency, but what I'm seeing is that the majority is using taxpayer money to superfund the attorney to crank out legislation after legislation after legislation that's retaliatory, vague, arbitrary, overreaching, restrictive.
Isn't that a shame we have to do that?
It really is.
Well, the shame is, is that it's Councilman Frazier that's brought in the spot glass and is trying to hold you accountable. And in retaliation, you seem to be determined to violate election law and have him removed from office, for you already censured him for accusing him of making a clerk cry. I mean, according to this legislation, if he picks his nose in public, it seems the three of you can censure him and do a recall election.
Incorrect. We cannot do that.
This applies to everyone on this council.
That's right, because you have to change the charter first.
Everyone on this council is... Equally applies.
No, but it doesn't equally apply.
No one singled out here.
Two people... If you do something, three people have to censure you. There's already a three-person majority on this, so you're not protecting the minority. The minority can never censure any of the three that are the majority, that are paying the city attorney thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars to... You can't spill ink on a paper and change all the election law.
Right.
The state constitution, and it's particularly retaliatory on your part, it seems.
Why are you questioning my integrity?
Well, you called me a dog catcher, didn't you?
Why are you...
I didn't say you're a dog catcher. I said you would take...
I never...
I'm going to have to call into this discussion.
I'm going to call into the discussion. This is enough. It's getting out of hand.
The Councilman can make right that.
Please take your seat.
Well, you're pointing your finger at me, and I never said your name.
Please take your seat. You're... Is there anyone else? Anyone else have a comment? Carl?
Here comes Carl.
Have you talked about something about the town? Instead of the state?
Yeah, well, that's...
I have a horrible feeling about this campaign financing thing. There's a number of places in there that I see some loopholes. Generally speaking, it wouldn't really bother me, but I tell you the truth. I think every cent that every person spends and gets should be reported. Not a 500 here, or a thousand there. It's too gamy. Consider that, please.
Okay.
Carl?